Ki lo no lo se, suhambenami. Daun ooyame, ayikolana, buuso wame, au kolana. Ki lo no lo se, suhambenami. Ki lo no lo se, ki lo no lo se, ki lo no lo se. Suu ngani shilana. Ki lo no lo se, ki lo no lo se, ki lo no lo se. Suu ngani shilana. Daun ooyame, ayikolana, buuso wame, au kolana. Ki lo no lo se, suhambenami. Daun ooyame, ayikolana, buuso wame, au kolana. Ki lo no lo se, suhambenami.
Good morning, good afternoon and good evening. Hello District 114 and guests. It's wonderful to see you all dialing in from different corners of our wonderful district. I see a few people from Kenya, I've seen a few people dialing in from Uganda, from Tanzania, from Ethiopia as well, and I look forward to seeing a wide representation from across our district. But today we also have guests dialing in from different parts of the world. And I want to start off by recognizing the presence of our region advisor, distinguished Toastmaster Nick Keaton. Hello Nikki, how are you? Good, I see your hand clap, okay? I hope that means that you're well. We are also joined by other members of our trio. We have distinguished Toastmaster Connie and Shamerei. We have our Club Growth Director Wilson Asimwe. We also will be having the District 34 Director Arturo Aubry, dialing in all the way from Mexico. And I see he's written Mexico City. A very warm welcome to you distinguished Toastmaster. We will also be joined very soon by the Club Growth Director for District 94 in West Africa, Toma Kakpo. And we are looking forward to just a wonderful session this evening. But before we get started District 114, let's take a temperature check. How are you all doing? And this is purely anonymous and I welcome guests to answer as well. We have 103 days remaining in this year, this Toastmasters year. 103 days before we get to the 30th of June. And I want to ask you, how are you feeling? So first of all, I'm gonna launch a poll. Please feel free to answer with 103 days to go this Toastmasters year. How are you really feeling? Purely anonymous. So feel free to put whatever you want to put down. How are you feeling with 103 days to go? Alright, couple of you are feeling great. One or two of you are feeling good. Oh, some of us are feeling overwhelmed, okay? And one person has said that they're feeling burnt out. Well, I'm right there with all of you. There are days when I am feeling great. There are days when I am feeling good. And there are days when I'm feeling overwhelmed or burnt out. But what I love is that so far, no one is saying that they feel indifferent. So here are the results from the first question of our poll. The majority of you are feeling great. Some of us are feeling good. Some of us are overwhelmed and one of us is feeling burnt out. And this is quite okay, quite normal. Okay, our next question. Let's see. Since so many of us are feeling great, how many of us have already renewed our membership for the April to September period? How many of us have already renewed and the numbers are going up? We have 34 people in, we're expecting many, many more. How many of us have already renewed our membership? Alright, well 70% of us, 67 is going down huh? 64% of us so far have already renewed our membership. Great. There's nine of us in this room who have yet to renew. And we want to make sure, is it because you don't know how to do so? Are you waiting for a few more days? What is it that we can do to make sure that we bring you on board for the remaining 103 days of this year? But also for the period between 1st of July to the end of September? So let's keep renewing. 18 of you have done so. 10 of you haven't and a few of you haven't responded as yet. I'm gonna end this poll, quickly share the results for all of you. There we are. So the majority of us have. Congratulations and thank you for your continued loyalty. And for those of you who are still to do it, yet to do it, you're more than welcome to do so soon. Alright. Alright, next question. Another temperature check. We're here for growth and membership today. That's the crux of the discussion today. So would you consider chartering a club if you are supported to do so? Would you consider chartering a club if you were supported to do so? Alright, it's coming in. Quite a few are saying definitely. Well, there's 15 of you who've said definitely. We're looking to charter at least 10 more clubs this year. So we already have sponsors right there. If you have said definitely and you know you're not in a sponsors list, I want you to just send a note to Club Growth Director Wilson Asimwe. Send it privately or put it in the chat and say, "I definitely am ready to charter a club if I get the support." Send your name, send your contact so that he can get in touch with you. Those of you who've said maybe, send your contact to him as well and tell him what would be the tipping point towards making sure that you assist this year. And for those of you who say, "I need a lot more information", fantastic, because I've seen members of the Club Growth Team here today. I have seen distinguished Toastmaster Jamie Mule. I have seen Rodrick Musetu, the Club Growth Director is here. Just send a note to say what kind of information are you looking for? And I know that they are waiting, just waiting to hear from you to know exactly what to do next. Alright, so I'm gonna end the poll there and share the results. So whopping 61% of you are ready. That's 17 of you. Please send CGD underscore Wilson Asimwe, your name, your details so that he can get in touch with you. And even if you said maybe or you need a lot more information, please send the information. I'm encouraged that no one said no. There was no outright no. Maybe you were thinking it, but at least you didn't post it into the group. Alright, one more question before we get on with the rest of our program. What are you expecting from today's Town Hall meeting, friends? Are you looking for fun, a bit of learning, some networking? All of the above or none of the above? What can we do to make sure that today is a successful session? Alright. So a lot of you, majority are saying all of the above. Fantastic. Some of you are wanting to learn. Some of you are wanting to network. Okay, fantastic. Well, we have a bit of everything lined up. One of you said none of the above. Well, you're welcome to stay on. But today there's definitely going to be some fun. There's definitely going to be some learning and there's definitely going to be some networking. So if there's anything else that we can offer you today, do just post it into the chat and we'll see how we can attend to your needs. But at that juncture, I just want to share the results to that poll. The majority of you, 74% are looking for all of the above and we are going to do our very best to achieve this. At this point, I quickly want to ask CGD Wilson, because I see him on screen. Are people sending you their contacts CGD Wilson? Have you received a few names?
Yes, I've received three names so far.
Wonderful. If you are part of the 17 people who definitely want to charter a club this year, please, that was CGD Wilson. Now you've seen him. Look for CGD underscore Wilson Asimwe. Send him a message. Who are you? Your contacts and next week, starting tomorrow, he and his team, they will be getting in touch with you to share more information. Fantastic. Friends, Toastmasters and guests, my name is Amelia Suingwa. I'm the District 114 Director. And that essentially ends my contribution this evening. I'm looking forward to fun, learning, and I'm looking forward to just meeting more of you this evening. At this point, I want to welcome Area 16 Director Dr. Kevin Rubio, who's going to be taking us through a District 114 and Toastmasters Quiz. Over to you, Kevin.
Much obliged, our District Director Amelia Suingwa. I hope everyone is ready to have fun, as this is a fun segment in this session today. If you're ready to have some fun, learn and enjoy yourself, please chat "I" on the chat section. And also click this link that I posted in the chat. I will post it again for those of us who may have joined a bit later. It is a link to participate in an interactive game full of learning and fun. Click that link, continue. I can see your eyes. Thank you very much. So many eyes already coming in. Majority of you have actually logged into the game. Just a minute. Fantastic. For those of us who are logging in, let's do so as quickly as possible so that we enjoy and learn as much as we can. Great. Today we'll have a quiz on growth and membership. How much do we know about our district and how much do we know about Toastmasters International? We shall find out soon. We have only three instructions today. One is to, sorry. One is that we'll have 10 multiple choice questions and one open-ended question. Two, 10 seconds per question. And three, the faster you are and the correct, the more correct you are, the higher your points. Let's see how quick and how witty we are. You may have seen your emoji or emoticon on the screen if you've joined. 33 of us have already joined and 34 in county. We shall continue. You can still join on the way. See, some of the instructions are at the top in case you haven't joined. Welcome player number 34. Let's begin. Hmm. I think one of my questions, okay, let's begin. Yes, there we are. The faster you are, the more points you get. What is the minimum number of members a club must have to be considered active by World Headquarters? You only have 10 seconds to answer this, ladies and gentlemen, and anyone in between of course. Majority of us said 20, but the correct answer is 8. With that, our leaderboard is as follows with Pale Boots being first with 941 points, followed by Tactum and Andrea. I'm sure things will change. Do not worry. Policy 2.0 of our governing documents of Toastmasters International tells us that a member club is considered paid and in good standing when its dues have been received by World Headquarters for the current dues period for a minimum of eight members, at least three of whom are members of the club during the previous renewal period. That's important for us to know moving forward as we are in a renewal period. Next question. How many active clubs do we currently have in our district? How many active clubs do we currently have in our district? The keyword here is active. Many of us could have. Does that mean none of us answered the question? Let's see.
There's no option of answering.
He didn't, he didn't project on the, on the site.
Okay. Let me reload my screen. I hope it will, question 2 of 10, let's try again. Sorry for that mishap. I hope some of you have seen the answers in case you didn't see. Sorry. How many active clubs do we currently have? I hope there are options now. 75, 77, 79. Great. If you managed to sneak your view, you would have noticed that I had projected the answer 77. That is according to our current dashboard. Anyone can access this dashboard. You just need to log in in Toastmasters International. To become smelly distinguished, to become a smelly distinguished district, we need at least 86 active clubs. Smelly distinguished status is the highest status you can reach as a district. Ladybug takes the lead this time round after Tactum. Congratulations to you AK for being third currently. Next question. Jitahidi Toastmasters Club has 23 members in July 1st, 2022. How many members must it have at June 20, 30th, June 2023 to earn DCP recognition at year end? At least 20 members is correct and I'm happy to see majority of us got the question. The explanation will follow a bit later after the next question. Ladybug, you're still doing well. Ketsia, welcome to the top five. Let's continue and see. Great, we are 35. Sebon Toastmasters Club, most probably in Rwanda, began with 15 members on July 1st, 2022. At June 30th of the next year, they must have at least 10 members to be recognized under the DCP. The correct answer is 18. Many of us said 20, but let us see what the explanation is. Sorry Pale Boots. Ladybug, you're still doing well. And Amazing is now Amazing at position number two. I hope I do have my slide for the explanation. Yes, effective immediately, the membership requirement is now having either 20 members or a net growth of at least three, three, not five as previously stated, as we previously knew. Three new dual or in city members as of June 30th. That was a message from the Board of Directors on the 17th of August 2022. And this was also going to act within this Toastmasters year. Next question. They still hope for us who are not in the top 10, this, we are now at the halfway mark. What is the minimum number of points that your club must add to be distinguished? This is an easy one. Is it 5 points, 7 points or 9 points? To become a distinguished club, how many points does your club need? And the correct answer is 5, at least 5. Minimum was the keyword. When your club meets a qualifying requirement, which we've talked about, the membership requirement, and also does the following get 5, 7 or 9 goals? It is now recognized under the distinguished club program, the DCP program. This is on the distinguished club program and club success plan, page 10. How is our leaderboard? Manda Mano, how are you doing? You are at position number 5. Now you still remain at position 5, but AK climbs up to position 4. AJ, I see you at 10th position. Next, 36 of us have logged in. The minimum number of members required to charter a club is? Did Emilia just talked about chartering a club at the beginning? But how many members do we need to charter a club? The minimum number, 8, 15 or 20? The answer is 20. And policy 2.0, the same policy we talked about earlier of club and membership eligibility says that you need a minimum number of 20 individual members. Next question after our leaderboard. Our fastest this round was Manda Mano? Or was it Ladybug? Ladybug still is undefeated at position 1, while Aid has, or Ide has just joined us in 10th position. Next question. The charter application fee for a new club is? How much does a new club pay to charter? 120 USD, 125 US dollars or 145 US dollars? The answer is 125 US dollars and congratulations to the 13 of us who got it. How does this change our leaderboard? Queen was the fastest. Actually, Ladybug was. No, Queen was the fastest, but Ladybug still remains undefeated, unbeaten with 63, 60 points. Parachute, welcome. You've just landed on the 10th position. Great, how many more questions to go? For, and for a charter, for a new club, they need to pay 125 US dollars. But remember, all these members are new. So they each also have to pay 20 USD. That's the first point on your screen. And this can be found under our governing documents, policy 8.0. Next question, ladies and gentlemen, we are about to finish this quiz. How are you doing? We're only 31. Some people have dropped out. When must your club elect its new club officers? When must your club elect its new club officers? Is it 1, at the first club meeting in May? 2, at the first club meeting in November? Or 3, in the first club meeting in June? There were two correct answers here. Let me explain. Congratulations to the 16, 17, 18 of us who got it. This, page 56 of the Club Leadership Handbook says, or actually proposes that we hold elections at the first meeting in May with new officers taking office in July 1st. But remember, there are some clubs that elect officers semi-annually. So then they can have their elections in November with new officers taking office on January 1st of the next year. How is our leaderboard? Parachute, I can see you rising to the top. But Ladybug is still undefeated. Will the next question change the results? This is the penalty question. And here it is, which club leaders are also members of the district council? Which club leaders are also members of the district council? Here, you're lucky I gave you 15 seconds. Is it the president? Is this the president and vice president education? Or is it the president, vice president, education and vice president membership? The correct answer is the president and the vice president of education. And this is why. Look at this diagram. It's an organogram showing our leadership structure. When it comes to the districts, you'll see there's the District Executive Committee. And there's also the Club President and Vice President Education. Both constitute the district council. Below you can see the District Executive Committee members. A fun fact is the Vice President of Membership is also a member of the area council, but he or she is not a member of the district council. The last question should be an easy one. And it requires you to type, so get ready to type your answer. Ladybug, you still at the top? We just had a shift in the middle. How will things change? Last but certainly not least. The question. All correct answers will give you the marks. Which city will host Ticon 2023? Which city in East Africa will host Ticon of 2023, this year's Ticon? Which will be on April 19th? The correct answer is Dar es Salaam. So I was also looking at spelling. Sorry, we did not get it. And what does this do to our final scores? Ladybug, Amazing, AK. Actually AJ displaces AK and those are our top three. With Ladybug, congratulations, being our first winner of this meeting tonight. So I hope we all learned something new. And let us, with the same fun and energy, learn something in the next session. Over to our District Director.
Wonderful. That was fun and that was extremely educational. Ladybug, do you want to say who you are? Please reveal yourself and let us cheer for you and congratulate you, Ladybug.
So unfair. Obviously, I had to win. Stop competing because I was thinking, oh, no competition. Sorry, guys.
Well, congratulations, Ladybug. Fantastic. I think it's a good thing, Madam PQD, that you are Ladybug. Otherwise, we would be concerned. So congratulations.
The number two person, really, not me.
Congratulations, Ladybug and to everyone. We hope that you enjoyed it and I thoroughly enjoyed it. I see that, I see that we have DTM Nikki, who is saying it was great fun. So congratulations, AD Kevin Rubio for that. Great, it's now time to move on to a more educational session. But also one where I hope that you will get to meet people that you don't ordinarily interact with and that people who you will now be willing to actually seek out for information, for help and for the support that you might need to either attract new members, to retain members or even to ensure that you're able to grow that new club. So at this juncture, I would wish to welcome our distinguished Toastmaster Jamie Mule, who is the Club Extension Chair of District 114. Her role especially is to ensure that we are converting leads into new clubs Her role especially is to ensure that we are converting leads into new clubs to supporting people who want to charter new clubs. That is the role of distinguished toastmaster, Janie Muller. There she is. Welcome to you, distinguished toastmaster, Janie. And I now want to welcome your panelists as well. We have District thirty-four director, distinguished toastmaster, Arturo Aubrey, welcome, joining us all the way from Mexico City. For him, it's still morning at this juncture. I also want to welcome vice president from membership of Jupiter Toastmasters Club, dialing in from Addis Ababa, Lense Adete, Dr. Lense Adete. I invite you to put your cameras on. Distinguished toastmaster Arturo and toastmaster Lense, please do put your videos on so that we can spotlight you. At the moment, our club growth director for District ninety-four is struggling with his internet connection. I hope you'll be able to make it, DTM Janie, before the end of your panel. But those are your two panelists. So welcome, Arturo and Lense, please put your videos on so that our SAA can spotlight you. Over to you, distinguished toastmaster, Janie.
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam District Director, Emilia Siwingu. It is such a joy and pleasure to be here this evening with all of you from District one-one-four, both toastmasters and our guests, and definitely our panelists. Toastmasters, today I know it is not I you have come to listen to, but our visitors. We will have a panel discussions based on both club growth and club growth. How have these members increased their memberships in their clubs? And how have they increased clubs in their districts? I am excited to be here and to moderate this panel discussion. Toastmasters, guests, if you have a question, I would request that you kindly leave it until towards the end. Please type them on the chat, I will be on the lookout. And for those of you who are also vice president's membership, those of you who have contributed to the growth of your clubs and your districts, and you have some points to share, please be ready with those points. For today, let us go to our panelists. And allow me to introduce our first panelist, it's good to see you, Arturo Aubrey, DTM. Coming all the way from District thirty-four, he is, uh, been a toastmaster since twenty thirteen. Twenty thirteen toastmasters. Her leadership career started in twenty fifteen, where she has been a club president, two-time area director, a division director, a club extension chair. She has been a club growth director for South Central Mexico, where she contributed to bringing in twenty-nine new clubs. Last year, she was the program quality director, and she achieved excellence in program quality. And this year, toastmasters and guests, she is the district director for her district. Toastmasters and guests, put your hands together as we welcome DTM Arturo Aubrey. Thank you very much. Next, our next panelist comes from our very own District one-one-four, and she is coming from neighboring Ethiopia, Dr. Lense Yadete. She is a medical doctor. She has been a member of Jupiter Toastmasters only since twenty-twenty-one. But guess what? Toastmasters and guests, she is responsible for bringing thirty-one new members to her club. We couldn't be in better company, toastmasters and guests. And today we will be listening and finding out what their secret has been. Toastmasters, again, put your hands together and help me welcome Dr. Lense. Thank you very much to the two of you, and straight into the conversation. You know, I want to start from home, if you will allow me, DTM Arturo, let me start from closer home. Dr. Lense, thirty-one new members. How, how did you do that? And my particular specific question is, who exactly was responsible for bringing in thirty-one members? Is it the club ex-col members? Was it the members? Was it you? Was it the president? Who was responsible? Over to you, Dr. Ari.
Thank you, madam. Madam Chair, I, this is my first year as a ex-col member, and this is very surprising for me to be in such a position. And this shows that the team we have here at Jupiter Toastmasters is amazing. You know, there's a famous quote that says talent wins games, but teamwork wins teamwork wins championships. And we were able to do this because of the great team I was privileged enough to work with. And it's, you know, the results we have is because of the dedicated members we have who can, you know, who promote the club in every occasion. When I mean every occasion, it could be a social gathering, it could be a work, or it could be at some other meetings. They are always, always promoting Toastmasters. And a lot of times when I meet potential new members, they tell me, you know, Toastmasters, someone told me about this club, and they insisted I come and visit. Even yesterday and this morning, I received a text message from a potential new members writing me that they want to be a toastmaster. They want to join and become a toastmaster because of a recommendation of another toastmaster. And the teamwork in this club is really amazing, and I'm really, you know, I cannot take any credit while I work with such amazing people. But the main thing is the sense of family we have at the club, the friendship, the family sense we have at the club is very important, and that's the main reason we were able to have thirty-one new members in our club. And also, the ex-col is very dedicated, we follow up on each other and help each other out on following up new members, even when I'm not around. The other ex-col members are very dedicated on following up new members and guests. And that gives, you know, the sense of family where they feel safe, and they're happy to come back and return. Of course, we have to follow them up. We have to send them texts on Telegram or WhatsApp, a personal message, and follow up on how they decided, how, what their decision is to continue with our club or others. But the teamwork is where the secret is for our club. And I'm really privileged to work with such an amazing team. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Lense, she's talking about teamwork and a sense of family. It's interesting because you say that the toastmasters, talk about toastmasters in every occasion, any social gathering. You know, sometimes I want to think of myself, like, I talk about toastmasters everywhere, but I don't think I've had as much luck. So my, my question to you, Lense, for example, take you as an example. So what do you mean you talk about toastmasters in each, in every social occasion? Give me an example of a social gathering or whatever gathering, and exactly what you get to say in such a situation? What do you say in such a gathering?
Today, earlier today, I was at a friend's house for a baby shower. My friend is having a baby soon, and we were having a, you know, we were having a baby shower. And during the baby shower, right after we had the pictures and the candies and the confetti and all, somebody has to stand up and start to lead the program. They have to give opportunities to other people to talk, say something about the, for the new mom, and give out advices and so on, and everybody was scared, you know? It's kind of frightening to stand up in front of strangers you don't know, and, you know, lead. And I, I gave, you know, I volunteered, I stood up, and I told them, you know, today is about her, so let's, you know, let's talk about her, let's give out advice to the new mom, and we had a really good time. And afterwards, they came to me and asked me, you know, you're kind of confident for this, you know? Have you done this too often? And I told them, you know, I get involved in clubs that help me become more confident in such occasions. And I was, I told the friend that asked me, you know, we have a club named Toastmasters in Ethiopia, and I explained a couple of things, when and how she can join Toastmasters if needed, and how it would help boost her in confidence in such occasions. And I told her about table topics, how we are expected to make toasts and toastmasters and so on. And even if it's not directly related to the occasion, I was able to promote Toastmasters in a way, and she was really surprised. And she even asked me when our next session is. And she was so eager, I told her the meeting time for another club, because Jupiter is the coming Sunday. And she couldn't wait, she really wanted to see if what I'm talking is true. So I told her the other clubs that have meetings throughout the weekend. She took contacts, and I, I don't know, maybe I'll follow up with her on Sunday if she hasn't visited any other club. But this is how you can reach out to other clubs, and you know how you reach out to other people about Toastmasters. Social gatherings, you know, are where we practice our, our communication skill, leadership skill, and this is how we can promote.
No, thank you very much, you know, I'm, I'm honestly almost tickled. A baby shower, who would have thought? Toastmasters, if you thought you had talked about Toastmasters in every environment that you knew, had you ever thought about a baby shower? So it doesn't matter where we are, it doesn't matter what environment, what the occasion is, we can always talk about Toastmasters. Thank you very much, Dr. Lindsay, and Lense, 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 and I will be coming back to you. Let me just cross over a little bit to District thirty-four and ask DTM Aubrey, Arturo. And first of all, congratulations. I mean, it is admirable to see all the positions that you have held in Toastmasters since twenty thirteen. I mean, that is quite something. And even before I ask you about club growth, please tell us, just pretty quickly, what has kept you motivated all these years? Over to you, DTM Arturo.
Thank you, thank you. First of all, thank you for having me today and for the opportunity to share a little bit about what I have the, the great honor of, of doing at Toastmasters. There are too many things that keep me motivated, even though I was one of the ones that answered. I am exhausted during the poll earlier today. The first one is, I think that it's, um, it's a wrong idea when we say that Toastmasters doesn't pay us. Sure, we don't get paid financially with money, but we do get paid. And our pay is the lessons, the experience, all that we learn that we are able to apply outside of Toastmasters, the skills, the communication, the leadership abilities, having the capacity to deal with resources, projects, people, conflicts. So all those things are very valuable. And I think if you needed to develop those, take a for-profit course or going to your college for a certification, it would be orders of magnitude more expensive. So that's from the one side. On the other one, I, I don't know how it is over in your countries, but at least in mine, we are dealing with a severe security crisis. And that has to do mainly because of the social network that has been broken by generations of politicians. And, and there is not a, we do not have strong communities. So my idea is how different my country could be if instead of, I, I don't know if you're familiar with Seven-Eleven, like a convenience store, and we have those in every corner of Mexico. So imagine, this is a crazy idea, but imagine if we could have as many Toastmasters clubs as we have Seven-Elevens in Mexico, in every corner, in every borough, in every city, providing an environment, a safe environment for our members, for Mexican people to develop their leadership skills. So that's what I believe, and I think that Toastmasters is a great tool to create that opportunity for, for Mexican people to develop their skills. And then that leadership skills, we can apply them to improve our country, to make it more secure, to provide better opportunities for everyone else. So that's like my small drop in the ocean in the way that I can do my country better.
No, that is so interesting. And you know, I think I have been a victim of always wanting to say that, you know, Toastmasters doesn't pay. But, oh my God, of course, Toastmasters pays in the ways that you have said. So that's a good reminder that not monetary terms, but the benefits and the skills that we get absolutely Toastmasters face. Now, Toastmasters guests, if you can imagine, a toastmaster at every big corner that you take, every building that you take a corner, you find a Toastmasters. How much better would also our country, our district be? Thank you very much for sharing that, and that's it, Mr. DTM. Let me ask you, twenty-nine new clubs when you were club growth director, and then currently already, you already have this year, you already have twenty new clubs. My question is, how do you prospect? Where do you start from? And let me also ask, are those clubs mainly corporate clubs or community clubs? And then for both club, for both types of clubs, how do you begin to do the prospecting? Over to you.
Yes, well, those twenty-nine new clubs were chartered when I was club growth director. It was a good mix between corporate, community, and specialized clubs. I would say like, probably a third between those three categories. A third corporate, a third community clubs, and a third specialized clubs like language or, I don't know, like advanced clubs, or maybe clubs for business people. So those types of specialized clubs. And how do we, how did we approach to prospecting? So I, I'm going to emphasize what Dr. Lense mentioned about speaking about Toastmasters at every opportunity. And I would take it a little bit further. Take the idea and the vision that we have. My vision, for example, has always been, we charter new clubs because we want to create a better Mexico. And in that way, with that vision, every time I went to visit a club, in every speech contest, in every club officer training, everywhere I went, I always tried to, not tried, I always asked members, do you know someone that would like to charter a new club? Are you interested in chartering a new club? And making sure that you're proactive in that regard is very important. So there may, there will be times in which there are some members, like for example, that they have like this idea of something like, hmm, I probably would like to charter a new club, or I probably would like to, to take Toastmasters to my home city, for example. And the idea here is that you have to be very proactive on pushing people to, to take risks and to, uh, to get out of their comfort zone. So in that regard, making sure that you follow up, that you meet with them, that you explain them how to do it. It's going to make it or break it in terms of how many prospects do you have? So that's the first one. And I think that's the most important one. Like, I, I wouldn't say aggressive, but like be very, very proactive on trying to find prospects, following up with prospects, and motivating people, and a little bit, sometimes even pushing them, like making sure that they, they, because they are going to share any kind of fear, I don't have time, I don't have money, and I don't know how to do it. But most of them are just reflection. But most of them are just reflections of eternal fear. And and we all have been through the process of of doubting ourselves or or not having enough time. And we have to make them feel like they can do it and that we are going to support, support them. So that's the first one, and I think that's the most important one. And second is identifying what are your main opportunity markets? So Mexico is a big country and cover half of uh Mexican Republic. So there are like dozens of cities, at least dozens of cities with at least one hundred thousand people. That could have in Toastmasters Club. So we try to um from our existing members, we try to locate people that already live there. And that they were like uh joining Toastmasters online because they don't have the Toastmasters Club at their home city. And of course, we propose the idea of chartering a new club. Or on the other hand, you already have some clubs in a city, but maybe you don't have an English speaking club or a, I don't know. Club for um business people or commerce chambers. So those kind of things that that maybe are you are missing in your city. Identify those markets because those are opportunities to to grow. Uh, so that's the second one. The third one that I also used, uh we leveraged that was some alliances that we have. And that working with other organizations are very. For your example is our alliance with Rotary International. Uh, we charter two clubs, Toastmasters Clubs, but made out of rootarians. So that's also an opportunity to leverage that alliance. Or if you have commerce chambers, you can do, you can do that as well. Or if you have, uh, I don't know, a group of business people that meet regularly, you can propose them to 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 create an uh Toastmasters Club. So those kind of things work very effectively. Because the most important part of um chartering new club is having the people. And then you can do the 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 kickoff meeting, you can do the sales speech, you can do a follow ups. But the most important one is ha- is having the people. And so making sure that you identify those markets that would be interested in Toastmasters. What are your your opportunity markets? Where can you grow? What kind of people uh is going to help you to to promote the club? And that's very important. You have to identify those kinds of profiles.
Thank you. Thank you very much for sharing that. And Toastmasters in the room, I hope you are getting ideas about where we can look for new members and new clubs. You know, interesting to hear that you have a third of your clubs being the advanced and the specialized clubs. Because I think we don't have too many of those in District one, one, four. But just you're helping to give us the ideas. I know we have been trying to pursue the relationship with Rotary Clubs. Uh, but there are other, you know, we belong to many associations, Toastmasters. We are members of different kinds of organizations and groups. And now we are getting the idea that we can sell Toastmasters there. Um, particularly pleased and happy to hear when you say that sometimes really pushing people a little bit. And you know, sometimes I think you feel you feel bad about pushing people, you know, join Toastmasters. Or or can we come and do a demo meeting in your organization? But really, now when I listen to DT Amaturo talking, if I'm convinced about the benefits of Toastmasters. Then really I can push people a little bit. But I hope you're taking notes Toastmasters because as our District Director, Amelia has said, we do have a couple of days left. And we do have uh more time to charter new clubs and to get new members. Thank you so much, uh, Aturo. But let me just a- ask about, you know, the follow up. Personally, there are some times, because I'm currently District one, one, four at um Club Extension Chair. So sometimes people share with me leads of people who want to join Toastmasters. And sometimes they're like, maybe asking they want a Toastmasters Club in their organization. And you know, I I I I'm sure I don't have as many as probably you do. But how exactly do you do the follow up? Because sometimes I think I forget where I am in a conversation with this and that person. Do you follow them up uh yourself? Do you get their initial contacts and distribute them? How do you, how exactly do you go about the follow up? Right now in District one, one, four, we do have a list of prospective uh clubs. So how best can we do the follow up, DTM?
That's a great question. It depends. Um, for individual members, I try to to send them to specific clubs that I have identified. That are uh good clubs, quality clubs, that I know that they are going to follow up on those individual member club, uh individual members. Prospects for entire clubs, it um, there are a few ways. I think that one that it's it's very important that you have a um, what we call an inform informative meeting with them. Um, then this is like a meeting prior to having like the kickoff meeting. So the idea is that you meet with them to explain the process. To explain the expectations of how this is going to work. To mentor them for the kickoff meeting, very important. And of course, to make sure that they understand how you're going to get involved. But it's very important to start building that relationship with whoever is um have, whoever has that prospect. They are potentially going to be the leaders of that future club, probably precedent of the club. Because usually whoever is promoting a new club is already the leader of that group. It's like the natural speed for precedent of the club. Do you want to build a relationship with them? And you want to make sure that you uh set specific timelines for the the process of chartering a new club. So for example, let me, let me share an example of a club that we are chartering uh right now. And this is a Rotarian Club actually. And a few weeks ago, this prospect, I I was able to to get it. When I went to another city in Mexico and they. Uh, they had their uh club officer training, their their TLI. And I met him, he is a Vice President of Education of one of our clubs in that city. And we started talking about and he mentioned at some point that that he was a Rotarian. And I, at tho- at that point, he had no idea about creating a new club. So I suggested, hey, we are doing this project with Rotary, trying to bring. New clubs made up of Rotary members. Uh, would you be willing to to talk about that idea? And he said, yes, it sounds interesting. Uh, I would like to, yes, of course, to help you with creating a new club, right? So um, uh, we started speaking about that. I I started like pushing him into the idea of, okay, you're already a Rotarian president and Rotary Club. Why don't you invite your members over to Toastmasters and we create a new club? Uh, and and he said, yes, that's great. So if I hadn't followed up with that, with 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 him, he probably would have don't didn't mind or. For going altogether because it's not, it was not his objective, it was not his priority. It was my idea that I uh shared with him and he was on board, but I have to be the one that pushing the idea. So I I mentioned, okay, perfect. What about if we have a meeting with our Club Extension Chair next Monday? And then we had uh like the meeting on Monday and he said, okay, perfect. I I understand how this works, let's start. And then at that meeting, we said, okay, so the next step is kickoff meeting. How about two weeks from now for the kickoff meeting? And and this is something that we could probably speak more about, but um. It's very important that you said a kickoff meeting is the meeting when we start the club. It's not demo meeting. And I'm seeing that we can pause a little bit for. District Director?
Yes, yes. Thank you very much, DTM. Thank you for that contribution, Toastmasters. I think it's coming out loud and clear. We still have an opportunity with Rotary, the Rotary Clubs in our district. Toastmasters, please li- ha- have your questions coming, your ideas and your thoughts. But we do want to pause for a minute here and listen from distinguished Toastmaster Connie, our Program Quality Director. Uh, logging in now because she did, she does need to log out in a few minutes. But Toastmasters, let's hear from Connie. And then when we come back, we will first come back to Dr. Lancy and then go back to DT Amaturo. Over to you, DT, uh, PQD.
Yes, good evening. Am I unmuted? Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, 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 can hear you.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I am, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt such a fantastic session. But as you've heard, I I do have to to leave. Uh, I mean, I have a trip just now. So I want to give my report really quickly on how we are doing as District. One, one, four in terms of uh quality. We have just been uh talking now about growth. But please allow me to give a very quick overview of 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 our, of where we stand with quality. Madame P, uh, Madame District Director, would you please give me sharing rights? I want, I have a small presentation, but I'm for sure. Thank you. Okay. So we all heard that uh we need, we are, we have some goals as a district. And Kevin very ably, this showed us that in fact, to be a distinguished district as opposed to a distinguished club. Districts also can be distinguished. We need thirty three clubs to be distinguished. So we need thirty three clubs to have at least five goals for the whole district to be distinguished. We need thirty seven clubs to be distinguished, have at least five educational and uh discipline goals. To be select distinguished, forty one to be presidents, and we are all aiming at forty five, obviously, to be smedly distinguished as a district. What's our progress so far? I'm happy to inform you that actually in District one, one, four, we have at least, we have thirty clubs that have at least five goals. So we are very close to at least achieving the first level of distinguished. So we need only three, three more clubs. And since we have seven clubs with four goals, distinguished, I think, is going to be quite possible for us. If only we can just add on three more clubs. And then we have eleven clubs with three goals across the district. And again, I feel like if your club already has three goals, within the next three months, it's quite possible for us to get to our five goals. And then become one of the clubs that is contributing to the whole district, becoming presidents distinguished or smedleys distinguished. Now, you might ask yourself, how might you, as a member of a club in District one, one, four, contribute? Or how can you as a leader in in District one, one, four? We invite you to set some individual goals. Now, what what actually is, are these DCP goals made up of? Remember, they are educational goals. So if you're nearly finishing your level one, please finish your level one. If you're doing level two, you can add to some level two awards. And then you can also try and complete your level three if you you're there yet, or level four, or level five, or DTM. So those are the kind of educational goals that can help your club achieve one more goal and become distinguished if they are not yet already distinguished. On the other hand, you can help the club attract more members because every four new members gives the club a goal. Four more new members gives a club a goal. Number nine and number ten, if your club hasn't yet obtained this goal, it's no longer possible. But at least you can look at how you can help your club achieve these eight goals. And remember, to achieve distinguished status, obviously, we need twenty new members. If a closing number was at least twenty last year, or a net growth of three new members. If we were below the threshold of twenty new members at the close of last year. So I have a suggestion for you before I come to the end of my presentation. And in the PQD team, we have, we are going to be running a small campaign. Where we're going to say, if you feel that you're really busy and maybe you want to put just a little bit of effort towards your Toastmaster journey. Why don't you consider going for bronze? Bronze is a perfectly respectable position. And we want to suggest that by going for bronze, you can do one speech and just take on one club meeting role. I had thought two maybe, but then I put it down to to one, which is why roles is still plural. Or you can go for silver. And silver entails you doing three speeches and taking on three club meeting roles. We have three more months until June, until the end of June. So that means you can just aim at doing a speech every, every month and doing, taking one a club meeting role the other meeting of the month. Otherwise, if you're feeling like going for gold, why don't you aim at five speeches and doing five club meeting roles? Before the end of June. Goals are always motivating to us. If we know we've set a goal, then we can always go for it. Five speeches, even though we have six ma- uh, three months to go. I am removing the week of Ticon because I want us just to all come to Ticon in Daraslam. And and not have to worry about doing speeches or doing club meeting roles. But for the other five meetings between in April, between April and June, consider doing a speech. Why not? So what would be your next steps then? First of all, do reach out to your mentor or ask your Vice President of Education to assign you one if you don't have one. And this is just to receive the advice and support that you need, but also for accountability. Second, if you haven't renewed your membership, or if you only renewed until thirty first March. We only have a few days until thirty, until the thirty first of March, please renew your membership. And then go ahead and book the dates with your BPE so that you really know which date you're going to be doing what. And then log into the pathways and get started. So together we can be the best and just remember that best is all about building, empowering, supporting and working as a team. So if you're a member of a club, you can work as a team and set this personal goal so that your club can be distinguished. I'll just post a link here of the dashboard where you can go and see how your club is doing, see how other clubs are doing. And then see how you as an individual can contribute to the club being distinguished. And overall, the area and the dis- and the division and the district being distinguished. So that we can all do the best together. Back to you, Dee Dee Amelia.
I think it's, I think it's back to me. Thank you very much, DTM Connie, PQD. Toastmasters, does anybody have any question for DTM Connie? I personally, I'm going for gold. I want to contribute to my club, my area, my division and my district. I'm going for gold. Any questions? And uh, Dr. Rubia, if you can look out in the chat box to see if there's any question for DTM Connie. And I know Connie will need to drop off very soon. And if she does, please still ask your questions. Madame Dee Dee will be able to take the questions. Dr. Rubia, any questions, any comments for Connie?
There is a question. Our, from Division E Director, Ida, who says, what is the price for doing the gold, for going the gold? Is there any prize?
I I kind of expected this question, uh, Kevin and Ida. There is no prize for going for gold or going for bronze or going for silver. Except doing it for your club and doing it for the district and doing it for yourself. So you'll just be in an elite mem- a group of people who will have gone for gold. We still have three months. Maybe you have some suggestions, Ida, how we can. Uh, really put more soup into this campaign. The PQD team is still thinking about it and perhaps it can think of some uh, some ways to to recognize you. But I just feel, anyway, just just wait for for more information on that, just to see. But I just feel, anyway, just, just wait for more information on that, just to see how we will know who has gone for gold, who has gone for silver, who has gone for bronze and who has achieved them and what that means. But mainly, it's just for you to set some goals for yourself. I'm also happy to, I'll just drop the presentation in the chat as well. I saw someone asking about the slides.
Apart from that is compliments. Your, your growth is enough, right? That's from President Ken Agutu. Thank you, P Q D Connie from Division Director Jesse. Prize is self-satisfaction from Division Director Eric, sorry, Oco Erastas. Sign up retorts by saying, thank you, P Q D Connie, great presentation. We should all go for gold. And finally, Frida Owenga says, great presentation. Thank you. Back to you, our moderator.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rubia. Thank you very much, Connie. If you're like me, you know, given what Madame Didi told us at the beginning of the year, we really just want to be our best. So if gold is going to take me to be my best, then I want to go for gold. Toastmasters guests, we will be concluding our panel discussion very soon. But like I said, we are going back to you, Dr. Lancy. And Lancy, I want to say that you did share about how you all talk about Toastmasters out there. My question is, what do you do in terms of membership drives within the club? Do you have some best practices, lessons learned? What are your strategies in doing membership drives within the club? Over to you.
So one of the things we are very keen about is to, to follow on current members to, you know, to make their, to motivate them to participate in club activities, assignments, club roles and to make speeches. This is not just the responsibility of the V P E, but everybody takes it as a personal responsibility. And I see a lot of times members motivating other members to do so. And that's, I believe that's very important. And also, we have some strategies like, you know, we have, we remind mentors to follow up on their main teeth and we encourage main teeth to reach out to their mentors whenever they need help. And also, we do campaigns. Currently, we are, we are having campaigns as part of our renewal season where we share testimonies from senior seasoned Toastmasters members in our clubs and share it with the whole club. And we motivate them, you know, we motivate people through the testimonies from those seasoned members on how it helped them become who they are today. And we have seen that it's been very effective in the past. And also, it's as, you know, me and my, my team, we have been reaching out to members individually, actually. We've been texting them about the membership renewal season and also whether they decide or not, we follow up on them and why they decide that is being followed. And if they have some things they feel like are missing, of course, we try to improve on that. And also, I remember a couple of months back, our V P also did a club check. She made a club checkup. I forgot the, actually, the checkup. Checkup, she sent out, she sent out a form and we filled it and she got back to us with the results. And it assessed the needs of the members. And that was very important as everybody wants to know that their needs are being met. So it was very effective. So these are the couple of things we've been using. Back to you, Madame Chair.
Thank you very much, and I like what you say. Let's not leave it to just the Vice President Education or the President or the Exco to arrange and plan for the meetings. Let us also take initiative. That is really good stuff. Toastmasters and guests, I hope you continue to pick titbits about how you can grow your club and how we will grow our district. I want to ask one last question to D T M Arturo and ask, you know, when you got to twenty-nine new clubs, what was the roadmap? At the beginning of the year, did you have a very detailed plan? What was the roadmap and how did you follow through your roadmap? Over to you, D T M.
Yes, there was our roadmap. There was a plan. Initial objective was thirty-five. And we actually came up with a plan, like a strategic plan and how we would do it. But in reality, throughout the program here, I would say that that plan changed a lot. So there are like some key elements of any plan that I, but I, I would say that the details are less important than, than the whole vision. So that's like the first one, like having a clear vision of what you want to accomplish and what you want to do. And making sure that anything that you do throughout the year, if the plan changes, if the details change, the vision doesn't change. It's the same vision, it's the same goal. And you can modify how you're going to accomplish it throughout the year, but that doesn't change. Also, is to have a great motivation because being, I always say that out of every single role that we offer in Toastmasters, from sergeant at arms all the way to international president, I think that being Club Growth Director is one of the hardest of the roles. So being motivated is a key part of success because there are going to be moments that are very difficult. You're going to get tired, you're going to lose faith, you're, you're going to go through many things that probably would make you lose your motivation so that you have to be very, very focused on what, why you're, why are you doing this? Why are you motivated? And in our cases, is what I already mentioned, making our country better and helping our district improve. And the third thing is, as I mentioned, being very focused and kind of aggressive and proactive, not following through. So when you have a prospect, you do the first meeting and then, when, when are we going to do the following, the kickoff meetings? And then keep following up, like you don't, you don't, unless you see that they are not interested, you can, that's the word. You can not following up with them. But otherwise, you have to be constantly pushing the project forward. That's our role as leaders. Moving things, making things flow, helping mentoring and all that, all those activities help. Using a river as an analogy and keeping the waters moving. Our goal is to keep the water moving. And if sometime, at any point, the waters get stuck, you have to identify where it's getting stuck and then remove that from the river. So making sure that the water is constantly moving and be very proactive and doing that so that in, in any case, at any point of the process, you're going to be the one that, that is going to solve that issue. Whether it's at the very beginning, trying to motivate a prospect to actually say yes to charter the new club or if it's at the very end where World Head was deals with paperwork and you are going to have to deal with that. And you have to be the one that, that is going to solve those problems if they arise with World Head for it. So I think that's the most important things. Having a clear vision, being very motivated over how this happens and three, making the water never stop.
Thank you very much and very well said. Keep the water moving. And if there's a blockage, identify it and get rid of whatever is blocking it. Toastmasters, I wish we could continue this conversation. We will stop here for a moment and take questions and comments from the chat. Dr. Rubia, we don't have too much time, but if you could, please start off and read a few of the comments, maybe contributions to the conversations and then read out one or two questions to the panelists, Dr. Rubia.
Thank you, D T M Janie. From the comments, we have D T M Jared saying, Toastmasters is like a flowing river. You have to trade your teaspoon with your teaspoon for a bucket to scoop more benefits. He also continues to agree with D T M Arturo, talking about the partnership of Rotary and Toastmasters International as being important and global. And Edna comments on the same and agrees. There are no comment, there are no questions as yet. Though someone talks, Hanan mentions that there would be a discussion about new members. Maybe we'll, we'll discuss that towards the end. For now, I, I could ask on behalf, or Jesse has a question. How do you handle payments for corporate club members? Does the organization pay or do the members pay? How do we handle that? Over to you, our panelist, D T M Arturo. Perhaps you could answer that question.
Of course. So I think that greatly depends on the organization. I've had corporate clubs that offer paying for the renewal fees for the new member fees, for the charter fees. That's great. On, on the one hand, it's great because, of course, you don't have to convince twenty members of paying their sixty-five dollars to join Toastmasters. On the other hand, I don't like it as much because usually those members that do not pay for their fees don't value the nostalgia as much as those that do pay. So yeah, I don't know, it's contradicting. If I'm being totally honest, corporate clubs are not my favorites. Corporate and student clubs are not my favorite because usually you have to deal with student clubs. They, they have to deal with money. They usually don't have money. And corporate clubs, they usually don't have motivation. So for a successful club, and this is probably dealing with problem quality a little bit more. But for a successful club, you need to have motivation and you have to have the financial resources to invest in that. And that you shouldn't have found our corporate clubs. They are, there are some, but they are like least and it's usually them found student clubs. So that's why I don't like them as much. But that's why I prefer community clubs. They are harder because they, of course, we need to persuade, inspire twenty people. But they are also those that tend to last longer. Because once you have persuaded and they pay and they join the club, it's usually those that, that maintain the club for a longer period of time. And usually corporate clubs, some student clubs keep struggling for years and it's very time consuming to, to have them.
Thank you for your response. Do, yes, over to D T M Janie.
Yes, thank you very much, Dr. Rubia, and apologies for those who probably have just put in a question. We have come to the end of this panel discussion and we do have one or two more things lined up for us. But allow me to say heartfelt thank you to you, D T M Arturo, for being here with us and sharing your experience and your lessons learned and best practices. V P M, Dr. Lancy, thank you so much. We wish you more than, more than the thirty-one new members you already have. And for you, D T M Arturo, we wish you all the best as you are leading District thirty-four. Toastmasters and guests, after what we have had today, it is my hope and prayer that you and I as Toastmasters will give it our best in the remaining days. We will talk to everybody we can about Toastmasters. We will volunteer to take roles. We will volunteer to deliver speeches. We are going for gold. We want to be the best and we definitely want District one one four to get to smedly. Thank you. It's been a pleasure. And at this point, I want to give it back to D T M, Didi Emilia Suingwa.
Thank you very much, Madam Club Extension Chair, D T M Janie Mule. Thank you, District Thirty-four Director, Arturo Aubrey. Thank you very much, Madam Vice President for Membership, Lense Yadete. At this point in time, I need to segue us through to a presentation by our Club Growth Director himself. We've heard the C G D role from S A A to International President might be the most difficult role to embody within the Toastmasters ecosystem. Mr. C G D, please share your updates with us. Over to you.
Thank you so much, D T M Emilia Suingwa. I am excited to be here this evening. And having listened to the two panelists, I've learned a lot. Learning never ends. And I reckon that we don't have a lot of time, but so let me just walk you through our updates. Our goal was to have at least a club chatted by each area. We have twenty-four areas in our district. So far, only three areas have managed to charter a club. And by the end of this month, we're going to have six new clubs chatted. We have sixteen prospective clubs, mostly from Division B and Division F. And I'm hopeful that we can charter these clubs before the end of our term. It is possible. We've done it before and we can do it if we are intentional. Regarding membership, there's been a slight decline in Division A, Division B and Division C. However, in Division E and F, we've had significant growth of gathering region in our region, East Africa. And we'd like to send our attractive letters from Toastmasters International as well as other documents that are going to persuade them to consider chartering clubs organizations. I'm hopeful that more members can join institutions, our low-hanging fruit. It's possible. We're here to support you. We have people who have experienced chartering corporate clubs, myself inclusive. If you have any club that, any company, large corporation that you think can charter a club, please reach out to us. We can help you. We've had four major events in four countries. We had a corporate summit in Addis Ababa. We had, we had a corporate summit in Kigali. And I also attended, I joined open house in Jassla. We had so many guests. I would like to encourage you to reach out to all those guests because I talked to some of them and they're interested in joining Toastmasters. Let's reach out to them and encourage them to join our clubs. We all belong to like-minded groups. And if we can invite guests, if we can talk about what Toastmasters offers, if we can go out there and exhibit what we have learned from Toastmasters, I'm sure many people will be interested in joining us. The Exco members should be the ones to lead by example. Need us to renew our membership and encourage other members to renew their membership. We have incentives for the first ten clubs to have twenty or more to renew their membership. Would like to give them fifty to celebrate to you, Didi Emilia.
CGD? Are you still with us?
I'm here, did you been there? I'm done with my presentation, over to you.
Fantastic, all right, wonderful. Thank you so much for those updates. Thank you for the energy, the effort that is going into the club growth efforts in our district. To the seventeen people who said they are interested in chartering a club, please make sure that if you haven't already sent your details or at least your name to our CGD, please just post it into the chat to everyone or directly to him. Let's try and achieve the goal that the district set out, which I heard the CGD said was a club in each area, meaning twenty-four. At this point, team, you're welcome to post any questions to the CGD in our chat. And as the questions come in to the CGD, but the panelists are actually still with us. So if there are questions for the panelists, please post them into the chat. I'm going to welcome the panelists and the CGD to respond in the chat. But at this point, I would wish to welcome an overview of Ticon, particularly the Microsite. A correction on what was said earlier, Ticon is not on the nineteenth of April. It's on the nineteenth of May to the twenty-first of May. So we are still two months away. Enough time for you to be able to make plans and arrangements to come down to Dar es Salaam and be part of the first in-person event at this stage, the district stage, since COVID. At this point, I want to welcome Luko Gilah. Luko, you're welcome to take us through the Ticon Microsite, over to you.
Thank you, hello everyone. I'm just gonna share my screen. Okay, hello everyone, it's a pleasure being able to speak today. For me, this is my first town hall and it's a really great pleasure. I've learned a lot of new stuff. Uh yeah, I will proceed to take you through the website, the Microsite. Okay, so first of all, in order to access our Microsite, you'll need to go to the following address highlighted, ticon dot district one-one-four dot R I G. I'm also posting it in the chat as well. I will post it in the chat as well for you guys to be able to access it easily. Okay, once you open the site, you will see a navigation bar here, which will be able to take you to through different segments of our Microsite. So first you have the ticket prices. Once you click it, you'll be able to see all the ticket prices as shown here below. I'll take you through the process of how to buy the tickets. Uh the second part is the travel accommodation. These are still in development, but they'll be live early next week where we will get all information on travel and accommodation. You'll have information about speakers as well, who are gonna be speaking at the conference. You'll have your news and a date se- section and the organizing team as well. And right at the end here, that's where you'll be able to click the link that will take you to another site to be able to buy your ticket. So, once you click the buy ticket link, you'll be taken to this platform where you'll get a brief on the toast, on the, on the conference. And down here below is where you can now start proceeding to buy your tickets. So as you can see here, we have our Toastmasters Early Bird Ticket. We have our Early Bird Tickets, which are for the Toastmasters. Sixty-five dollars for Gavel Club Members, it's thirty dollars. For non-Toastmasters is seventy-five dollars. And after that, after the Early Bird season ends, we'll have our ordinary tickets. That will be at eighty dollars for the Toastmasters, forty-five years for Gavel Club Members and ninety dollars for Toastmasters. Also, we have our Gala Dinner Tickets here as well. So once you select one of the tickets above here, you have an option also to buy a Gala Dinner Ticket as well. So I'll take you through the process as follows. So I wanna go, I'm a Toastmaster and I wanna buy an Early Bird Ticket. So I'll come here, I'll select how many tickets I want. I just want one ticket. And I wanna go to the Gala Dinner as well. So also select the tickets that I want for the Gala Ticket. Maybe I want two tickets for the Gala Dinner. And then down here, I'll come and put in my information. I'll put in my email. And you'll put in your phone number. You agree to the terms and conditions and then you proceed to pay. Sorry, my internet is a bit slow, but on the next page, it's basically you're gonna be provided with different E S. Here it's open, gonna provide, provide you with all the available payment options. You have M-Pesa, you have the Extra Money, Visa and Visa, that's a pile. Uh and for Kenyan peoples, you can just direct for M-Pesa, you can directly put in your Kenyan number. For Visa, you can put in your card number, et cetera, et cetera. And then you can proceed to buy your ticket. And yes, I will, I would, so I encourage you all to jump on the Early Bird Tickets uh as they are cheaper. Uh and you also stand a chance, once you buy the Early Bird Tickets, just go to you stand a chance of winning. Uh you, you can, you get entered into a raffle, which gives, gives you a chance to win either a free three nights stay at the five-star Johari Rotana Hotel and the two free Gala Dinner Tickets. So I encourage you all to uh buy Early Bird Tickets so you can get a chance to win uh these prizes. And thank you, back to you, DTM Emilia-Suingwa.
Thank you so much, Luko, for taking us through the Ticon Microsite. Friends, fellow Toastmasters and guests, everyone is welcome to attend Ticon Twenty-Twenty-Three in Dar es Salaam, Tanzania, to be held at the Johari Rotana Hotel. The ticket sales have been live for about a week. Ticket sales have been open. People have been buying tickets. Congratulations to everybody who has already been automatically entered into the Early Bird Raffle for a free three-night stay or two free Gala Dinner Tickets. I saw someone asking the P Q D to provide free tickets to Ticon. You're gonna have to at least buy your Early Bird Ticket and then you might then have the option of entering into the gala or and getting a free three-night stay through the raffle. Thank you, everybody. I am not seeing any questions in the chat. I've seen a couple of, yeah, I'm not seeing any questions. Ah, if you purchase tickets for a group of five, for instance, at what point do you input each individual's details? Argwings Queston is on the call. Argwings is not only the District Finance Manager. Argwings is also the Finance Chair for Ticon. Argwings, are you with us? Are you able to respond to Emily Owiti's question? Ida, Division Director Ida, if you buy your Early Bird Ticket, you're already in the raffle. The raffle will be held after Early Bird Tickets expire, which is the seventeenth of April, if I'm not mistaken. So if you buy a, an Early Bird Ticket, you're in the raffle. You don't need to do anything else. We already know who has bought tickets till this date. So keep buying the tickets until the seventeenth of April. You are automatically entered into a raffle. Argwings, I see you're on the call. I don't know if you're still here. Ah, there you are. Please, Argwings, go ahead. Emily Owiti has asked specifically, if you purchase tickets for a group of, of five, for instance, at what point do you input each individual's details? Over to you.
So thanks.
Sorry, you're back on mute?
Sorry, can you hear me now? Yeah, sorry. As I was saying, uh, once you purchase your ticket, depending on the, on, on the Pesa pile link, our ticket, Sasa, uh you, 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 whatever you pay, let's say you're buying five tickets, that's what costs you about uh one hundred and that's about just under three hundred and twenty-five dollars. So that, at that point, it's immediate when you, when you actually pay up for your ticket. So the details should go live, but if you need, if you can do that point, I will should be able to assist you and allocate those tickets to you. But uh based on that, if you need any, what's called ballot registration. So if you get stuck, please reach out to me or to any member of the team to, if you have know that detail on, on the site. But the site has an option for ballot registration on, online. If you miss that, let me know. I don't know if that was clear?
Yes, very clear, thank you very much, DFM. At this point, I very quickly just want to show everybody. This site is actually live in the backend. It was created by our exclusive travel agent, Nsaferi Travels. It now just needs to be linked by Luko and Alex Agaba, our Marketing Chair, to the Ticon Microsite, but the Toastmasters Conference website is already up. You will be able to come to this site and book hotel. If you wanna have tours in Tanzania, for example, if you want intercity transfers via bus or via plane, you will be able to come to this exclusive website and see pics of five stars all the way to zero stars hotels. So now what we're waiting on is for our Microsite team, which includes Luko, who you've now met, a member of Gonggo Toastmasters Club and Alex Agaba, President of Campella Sunrise and the Ticon Marketing Chair. They just now need to link this particular site to our Microsite and you will be able to use this as you would booking.com or expedia.com to be able to book hotels, tours, intercity road transfers and flights. The great part of this is that the travel agent has negotiated preferred rates. You would be able to go on that site to look for preferred rate. And by using the preferred rates, you would then be able to either book for groups or book for individual travel and accommodation here in Dar es Salaam. I do want to encourage those of you, for instance, who want to stay together, please think about options like Airbnb. And you're more than welcome to look for houses, for instance, where you can book together. But we are trying to make sure that it is as affordable as possible to get to Dar es Salaam. I will say, this is a hybrid conference. But we would love to be able to get to meet each other. I can tell you, I joined in two thousand and nineteen, I only became active in twenty-twenty. There's a lot of that I have been in person and I would love and I know that our P Q D and our CGD and our Cabinet would love to be able to interact with each and every one of you. So as many of you who can come to Dar es Salaam, please do. Otherwise, we will be sharing arrangements after the Early Bird Ticket Rates close about how you can participate online as well. So the idea is to encourage as many of you as possible to get to Dar es Salaam. Buy an Early Bird Ticket, you are automatically entered into a raffle. And who knows, perhaps this is your lucky day. At this point, family, I would love to bring us and bring this meeting to a close. Unless there are any burning questions, of which I'm not seeing any in the chat, I want to thank every member of the District Executive Committee that I've seen logging in today. Meaning, if you're a member of the Cabinet, if you're a Division Director, if you're an Area Director, thank you so much for dialing in today. All Presidents and your executive committees that have dialed in today, thank you very much. To other members that I've seen, including buddies that we had identified at the beginning of the term for Division Directors, thank you so much. And I saw distinguished Toastmaster Jared Oukou, I don't know if you're still on the call, but thank you for dialing in. Thank you all, we are a family. And we would love for this family to meet together from the nineteenth to the twenty-first of May, in person or online. Let's continue being the best. Let's continue building each other up, empowering each other, supporting each other and working together as a team. Once again, thank you to our moderator and all of our panelists. Thank you to our P Q D, thank you to our CGD. God bless you all, have a wonderful Sunday. This brings us to the very end of our town hall. Until the next one, take care. Thank you, everyone, so good to see you all. Good night.